Welcome to the March 17, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Mr. Strossel, would you please call the roll?
Horstley.
Here.
Miracle.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Scott Dracy.
Fudge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Horstley. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Horstley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes. That brings us to item five, presentations. Mr. Modio.
Mr. Faulkner, members of the board. I'd like to start out this evening with our Gear Up grant presentation with Ms. Maureen Heinz and some guests from University of Cincinnati Blue Ash. Without stealing too much of Maureen's thunder tonight, is the Gear Up grant is a federal grant that Norwood City School District was one of a select few districts in the entire country to receive. The Gear Up grant provides for every graduate of Norwood City School District financial support to go to a college/university anywhere in the country. Students can get anywhere from $750 to $1,000 to any university, any two or four-year even trade school, post-secondary opportunity in the entire United States. But along with it, there's financial support for a significant amount of other items and other support processes. And tonight, as every month, Ms. Heinz explains what's going on in Gear Up. So floor's yours, Maureen.
Thank you, thank you. What I'm here to do... Good evening, everyone. Great to see everyone. We're such a nice crowd tonight. We have a big agenda this evening, Rising Stars and Academic Quiz C. So we will be brief and concise. What I'm giving out the board right now is our Hot Off the Press Writing Fellows brochure and all the stats of this wonderful, awesome program. As you all know, we have this partnership with, this awesome partnership with UC Blue Ash. And I talked about the math collaboration last month. This month, we're talking about our Writing Fellows collaboration. And I brought them with me, some of them. So I'm gonna let them do their thing and explain everything to you and the benefits and how it's tied into the grant and how it helps all of our students at the high school. And we are gonna branch down eventually to the middle school, but this is year one and it's like two months old. But sidebar-ing just really quick, I know you know about the Orange surveys that we sent home with our students. And we called to remind you, and we've gotten such a great turnout back, we needed 50 percent and we're at 49.7 tonight, everybody, for the parents coming back and then 80 percent to continue the grant here at Norwood. And everybody's so supportive. So is there any parent left in my wonderful audience from grades seven through 12 that have not had the opportunity to fill out the survey? And don't be shy. I'm at 79.8, I just need like three more. Okay, I'll get... Oh, awesome, here I go. Okay, and at the same time, Ms. Libby Anthony, Dr. Libby Anthony from UC Blue Ash will begin our presentation. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Again, as Maureen said, my name is Dr. Libby Anthony. I'm an assistant professor at UC Blue Ash. This is my second year there. I teach mostly composition classes, a variety of different writing classes. I have my PhD in rhetoric and writing from Virginia Tech. And I'm a National Writing Project Fellow and I have a background in writing center theory and pedagogy, as well as community partnerships. I first became involved with the Gear Up grant and particularly the Writing Fellows back in the spring when Maureen came to UC Blue Ash with this great idea of, "Let's start a writing center." So I was approached by the department chair in the English and Communications Department because of my writing center background. I've worked with a variety of writing centers on training students to get them ready to work with other students. In the fall, I worked with my department chair to identify a couple of UC Blue Ash students who we thought might be a good fit for the program. And we spent the fall interviewing and selecting a handful of excellent UC Blue Ash students who are particularly adept at talking with students about their writing. I have a couple of them with me here today, but we have a total of six of them. The six Writing Fellows and I and the department chair, Sue Sipple, spent a couple of weekends in the fall on our training where we talked about a lot of writing center concepts. Maureen has asked me to emphasize the fact that I got them to come in on Saturdays, give up their own time.
College kids.
College kids on Saturdays, mornings no less, to work with us on their, on their training. And we quickly developed this term of Writing Fellows for the, for the six fine young folks that are in this position. The partnership is allowing for our UC Blue Ash students to get the experience as near-peer mentors where they get to work with and tutor students who are, they're just a few years older than. And it's also helping the Norwood students to become more successful in their classes and also they're helping out with a lot of things like college prep and scholarship applications. And we're hoping that, you know, this is a lot of work that will help the students grow as, as writers, but also as students here at Norwood and beyond. I have three of our excellent Writing Fellows with us today. First, Sam Dexter is an English major, he'll be speaking with you. Marie Schneider is next. She's early childhood education major. And at the end of the row here, we have Lizzie Craig, who is an English major.
I hope you're all having a wonderful day. I would like to just talk about how the Compass test and just sort of the process that we went through and just going through that process with the students and just prepping them for the test and just showing them what was on it. So I was in charge of making sure the seniors at Norwood, who are planning to attend Cincinnati State, were ready and prepped for the English portion of the Compass test, as I said. Therefore, I was provided a list of all the students who needed to take the test and I got to work on making them folders and copies of all the practice work. Once the technical details were established, I put the folders out for each Writing Fellow to use with their appropriate students. Since I wasn't able to be at Norwood each day of the week, each Writing Fellow was assigned a different number of students to work with. As such, I personally worked with four students from the list in order to prepare them. I'd gather the students from the classroom and bring them back to the library. Once there, the students were given the practice work and I'd sit in between all of them at the provided long table. I filled out, I filled out a master copy of the practice work myself, just so I could see what sort of work it was and in case of any issues with questions or problems. Additionally, I'd answer the students' questions or concerns to the best of my abilities without giving away free answers. What good is practice if it's not being done efficiently? So, yeah. Although I wasn't able to meet with all the students under my wing as often as I would have liked, each individual was at least able to see what they were in for via the Compass test. I feel like this practice was rather essential in guiding the students along. The greatest result from it, after all, was how none of them were left in the dark about what should be expected on the Compass test. I'm appreciative for the attention, time, and effort each student has given me, and in turn, I shall reflect just as much upon them, if not more, from my own, from my own perspective. Education is one of the greatest gifts individuals can receive. I plan on making sure each student I work with understands this notion. So, yeah, thank you for having me and listening.
As Libby said, I'm Marie Schneider. I'm an early childhood education major and graduated last year from Merrimott. I was very honored to be selected to work with the Norwood students and have found them mostly to be welcoming of the help. I know, I wish I had this opportunity when I was in high school. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been working on the UC Blue Ash Placement Test and similar to Sam, have been helping them answer questions and guiding them. We have packets outlining each of the three parts of the test, which include a summary of the given article, then a response where the student agrees or disagrees with the presented arguments, and then finally, a reflection on their response where they explain what things they did right or good and things they think they need to improve on. I've also been working with Robin Brewer, who couldn't be here, but is one of the 11th grade English teachers. She has been a big supporter of the Writing Fellows and Gear Up. I've worked with many of her students during the Advisory Bill, which is the period between second and third bill here at the high school. This is an optimal time to meet with students as none of them have class at this time. Thank you for supporting the program.
All right, last but not least, you guys are gonna hear from me. Like Libby said, I am Lizzie Craig. I am an English major like Sam. I actually had Dr. Anthony as a teacher in college, so little fun fact. My, more my responsibility, if I could talk, I would talk to you guys. Most of my responsibility focuses more on the GPA of the kids. I see a few familiar faces out in the audience. Don't hide, guys. So I was given a list of kids who are not really doing so hot in English. So it's my responsibility to take them and say, "Hey, I see you have a few missing assignments. Why don't we get this done so your grade can go up?" And that seems to help a lot. I work, like Marie said, I work with Ms. Brewer a lot and also Mr. Deems. He actually is sending me two kids every sixth bell to work with me. One of them was not doing very well in English when he first came to me. He actually was doing very bad, very poorly. But I'm proud to say, in about two and a half weeks of being with me, he is now passing English. So that is something that I personally am very proud of, 'cause I get really nervous when I meet new kids. So I was actually a little freaked out when he first started coming to me, but now I'm a familiar face and he's very comfortable with coming to me. Like I said, I try to help with missing assignments and I try to motivate the kids, 'cause most of the time I get the, "Oh, I really don't want to do this assignment." And I always tell them, "Well, if you do it now with me, then you don't have to worry about it at home when you have a question and there's no one to ask for help." So I really like that they like coming to me. And I try to compare high school to college. Like this one kid, he was complaining about his book being too long. And I was like, "You know what? I'm gonna bring in my college book and then you can really complain." So like, like they all said, "Thank you for supporting the program and I hope that it continues, 'cause I like working here."
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Maureen. Next, I'd like, we're gonna be here in a moment recognizing our academic team who three years in a row is SB/AAC League Champions, three years in a row. Mr. Hunt, if you could please come down for a minute before we start this. Mr. Brad Hunt is a math teacher here at Norwood High School. I've known Brad for eight years. And one thing I know about Mr. Hunt is if there's kids that are math students and you can't find them at lunch, you go to Mr. Hunt's room. 'Cause in the eight years that I've known Brad, I've never seen him in his, in his room during lunch. I've never seen him in a teacher's lounge, but I've never seen him in his room during lunch without a handful of students, whether it's his AP Calculus kids, whether it's math students from another teacher, before school, after school, during lunch. Never seen somebody so dedicated to the kids. And a lot of people are dedicated, but Brad knows how to reach the kids, how to motivate the kids, how to work with our students. And that's the true essence of being an educator. Brad, I appreciate it and I want to take the opportunity to tell you that in front of everybody tonight. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, since you are the reigning three-time League Champion tonight.
There you go. Okay, first I'll call the players up here. First, we have captains Nick Giesman and Kevin English. Stephanie Robbins. Sarah Lowery. Jennifer Sepulveda. And Grayson Craig. There's a few of our members could not be here today because there's all, I'm sorry, it's Bailey Bemonte. Several of our members could not be here today. They're involved in spring sports. And Michael Wrestler, one of our seniors, is up in Columbus at a vocational competition for Diamond Oaks. So we'd like to put out to them. Who's not here is Dallas Lamping, a senior. Let's see, Michael Wrestler, Presley Riggs, and John Arthur are not here. Okay, our, this is our third year. It was our, that was our goal, was to win the league the third time in a row. And I have to say, the first two years were much easier than this year. First two years, we just kinda marched right through everybody and it was no problem. This year, we had, we got off to a rough start. We went one and four at the beginning of the season and those four losses, we lost by a total of 11 points combined. So they were just heartbreakers, one pointers, two pointers. And our seniors kinda banded together and all of a sudden, we just started stringing together victory after victory. So it was, it was the perseverance of the team that really that we owe this victory In the league tournament, which we had to win, the second match, we lost. So that put us into the losers bracket and our guys won six straight matches to, to claim the league championship. I would like to also add that if you guys would stand forward when I call your name, Kevin English, Nick Giesman, and Stephanie Robbins have been a member for all three League Champions. What a high school experience that's been.
Mr. Hunt, if you could join your students for a moment.
Sure.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
Congratulations again, guys. Just one note, all the photos that our executive assistant, Ms. Havlon, takes tonight, within the next several days, they'll be on the front page of our website, as well as on the individual building websites. So be sure to check our website and look for them. Next group that we would like to recognize is starting out with Coach Derek Alsop, our varsity head wrestling coach. I promised I wouldn't steal any of Mr. Alsop for Coach Alsop's thunder, but he's about to recognize state championship qualifying wrestlers, two wrestlers from Norwood High School. And over the last couple of years, I've learned a little bit about wrestling through osmosis from two of my sons, but it's kind of one of the greatest opportunities to learn about life. Because one of the easiest things to do in life is to make excuses. You know, even in sports, I played football in college and I could say, "Well, some other dude's block, it wasn't mine." Baseball, I wasn't a strike, I didn't strike out on fire, made a bad call. Basketball, I swear that rim moved every time I shot. But in wrestling, it's you. You're the only one out on the mat. It's you against another wrestler. And there's no excuses. It's one-on-one and it's all about your discipline, your passion, the coaching and down to the, there's no excuses, it's all about you. And so I think it's an amazing sport to really teach about, and I never wrestled, but to learn about and to teach about that, it's great life lessons. So I don't think I took too much of your thunder, Derek, so I'll turn it over to you.
All right. First, I'm gonna, I know most people don't know much about wrestling, so I'm gonna tell you what it takes to get the state as a, as a tournament. So to get the qualification, there's a sectional tournament and you place the top, if you place the top four, you go to the district tournament the next week. So only the top four places from sectionals come to the district tournament. You place top four at the district tournament, then you get to go to state. Then you're one of about, or you're one of 16 wrestlers in the state that make it in your weight class. And there are 15,000 wrestlers in the state of Ohio. And Ohio is one of the toughest wrestling states in the nation. We, every year in the NCAA Division One Tournament, we have, we come only in second for All-Americans to Pennsylvania. So we're considered the second-best country in the state, or state in the country, I'm sorry. So it's a really tough road. If you know how a bracket works, when it breaks down, if you're in the consolation bracket to wrestle for third and fourth, you have what's called the blood round. And they call it the blood round because if you win, you go to state. If you lose, you don't go to state. And there's a lot of blood because, you know, every wrestler's goal is to make it to the state tournament. And we're lucky enough to have two that accomplished that this year. I have these plaques at the, or certificates that the state gave us to present to these guys. So the first guy I'm gonna bring down is Casey Regal. Casey's only a sophomore making it to state. He had a 40 and 6 record this year. He's a two-time league champion, two-time sectional champion. A lot of people in the community already know Casey. He plays football, he plays baseball, he wrestles, he's in silhouettes, he has a really good grade point average, always above a B average. So the community knows him as an outstanding athlete and outstanding student. What I have to say about Casey is, he is very talented, but he's an example of where hard work meets talent. And that's what it takes to really be extraordinary. 'Cause we see lots of people with talent who don't see that through. Casey is right now on track to make Norwood history and be the first time, first three state, time state qualifier. We've had a lot of good wrestlers come through, but that would make him the best so far. The next guy that made the state's tri, Trayvon Ward. Trayvon's a senior. He had a record of 32 and 13. Story about Trayvon is, he never made it to the district tournament before this year. First time at districts, he made it to state. So he placed top four at districts. I just, I remember his first match was an upset. Every match at districts was an upset. Then he ended up making it to the semifinals where he lost. So then he dropped down to the blood round. And he won, he won the match from start to finish, he was never behind. And it was almost surreal because here's a kid who had a losing record the year before and he has made it to state. I wrestled my entire life and I had a coach that told me the story about a gold miner. And he had his own mine and he was by himself building this mine. And he never reached any gold, but he sold the mine to some big mining company. And the next day, just three feet away, they struck the biggest gold mine in California. Trayvon is, is that story made over because he chipped away at it. He worked hard every single day and he finally made it to state. Never won a tournament in high school and he is a state qualifier. One of the best 16 wrestlers in the state in his weight class. So like I said, that, that blood round was just, he won and it was like it wasn't real Mr. Modio talked about how wrestling, you're by yourself on the mat. The state tournaments at the Schottenstein Center at Ohio State University, this year we had an attendance of 18,000 spectators. And when you walk out on that mat from the tunnel, it's just, I mean, it's breathtaking how intense it is down there. And you're by yourself, you don't get a team to back you up. And I just want to say a quote that goes with what Mr. Modio said and, and what wrestling is, and it's about life too. And it goes, "The road is yours and yours alone. Some may walk it with you, but no one can walk it for you."
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Our next presentation tonight is, is very special. If you've been aboard before, there's a lot of things that make Norwood very unique and very special. And what we get to do next is something that I think is one of the greatest honors myself and the Board of Education can do. And we can honor somebody who spent their life giving, their life working, yet there was one thing missing, and that was coming here tonight for what this individual wanted. Before I go any further, I'd ask Mr. Richard T. Mallon, about to be a graduate of the class of 1953, to come forward. Back in January, middle of January, I received a letter from Mr. Mallon. And it's dated the 14th of January, and you can see the military background because most normal, everyday civilians, we write January 14, 2016, but this is 14 January. And soon as I read that, I thought, "I bet Mr. Mallon has military background." So on January 14, 2016, I was probably looking at the weather forecast, wondering when I was gonna have to call another snow day. Then I read this letter and it took me about three seconds to actually yell out to our secretary the word "absolutely," because that was what I thought when I read this. I'd like to read the letter that I opened up that day from Mr. Mallon. "Dear Mr. Modio, I was born and raised in Norwood and attended every elementary school during the time I was growing up. I attended Norwood High in my junior year, but I dropped out, joined the United States Navy, and completed my basic training in San Diego, California. After boot camp, I was assigned to an elite naval command in Albuquerque, New Mexico. This top-secret naval, or Navy Special Weapons Command was responsible for the training and assignment of officers and enlisted personnel in the care and maintenance of atomic warheads on various naval ships and ground facilities in both the Pacific and the Atlantic. I spent much of my remaining three years aboard the USS Hancock, CVA-19, and the ground command of SWOPAC on the Naval Air Station San Diego. After my discharge in 1956, I joined General Electric's Aircraft Nuclear Propulsion Department, ANPD, and studied at the Salmon Peach's Business School, wiring 60 credits. In 1961, the project suffered a presidential cancellation, I was laid off. Then I joined Frish's Management Program and over the next 40-plus years, I rose through the ranks and retired as a division vice president, big boy division. The one thing I regret is not having stayed to obtain my high school diploma. On the other hand, fate took me on an exciting trip in my working life. The reason for my latter is to request an honorary high school diploma from Norwood High School. I do this in the memory of Ms. Betty Kiernan, a wonderful counselor and a friend of my family, a friend of my family." Mr. Mallon, I have the honor to ask our Board of Education President to present you your diploma from, from 1953. Absolutely, Mr. Mallon.
I've waited two, three years for this honor. And over a period of time, married, my wonderful wife has passed. But my three children are here tonight and two grandchildren and two first cousins. And I guess, Katie Mooney would be my third cousin. But I've watched these kids grow. I've attended their high school graduation, including my grandkids. Now it's their turn to see this. And that's very important. I would like to recognize my son, Keye Mallon, my daughter Karen Mallon-Brenna, my other daughter Christine Lynn Mallon-Stable. My first cousin, who's a Norwood graduate, 1959, Phyllis Mulberry Bryant. And my other cousin in the audience, Jeff Popolo. And Jeff... fifty-nine, Phyllis Mulberry Bright. And my other cousin in the audience, Jeff Popeloff. And Jeff is born, raised in Norwood, and attended high school here. I don't remember the year he graduated, Jeff.
I graduated in sixty-seven.
And his daughter Katie. So thank you all for being here. And I'd like to recognize my son-in-law, Eric Stable, and my two grandkids, Brandon and Jesse Brown. So for sixty-three years, this is probably what I've been doing. I guess everybody's heard of Frish's, big boy. It's nineteen twenty-four, I think, Mr. David Frish graduated from Norwood High School. And I started actually with Frish's in nineteen forty-nine when I was fourteen years old. But the old, old kid boy, that property is now covered up by the interstate. So it's been a wonderful trip for me, and I hope that my next eighty years will be as exciting. You can tell I'm somewhat of an adventurer, and that's the reason I left Norwood in my junior year, because I get sand in your shoes and wanna see the world, and I did. And fate took me along. But I'm back now, and I'm very happy to be here, and I'm thankful for Mr. Modio, not Mr. Modio, for bringing me here and the approval of the board. This is probably a thing for me tomorrow night.
And just one more.
We'll let you guys get gathered, we'll wait for the rest of the meeting for a minute. Last area of presentations in our board meeting tonight, those are monthly recognition and honoring of our student rising stars. Each month, each building selects three students to be recognized as a rising star student. Rising star students are selected by the teachers, and what you will hear me read has been written by a teacher or teachers in honor of why your child, why this student is down here this evening to be recognized as a rising star. When I call your name, please come down to your board president, Mr. Faulkner, receive a certificate from Mr. Faulkner, and just come about three quarters of the way down in front of the stage on the carpet. I want you to everybody to remain here until we're completely finished with all the students from all the buildings, then we've got more pictures to take. One thing about the rising stars is, not only will your picture, but also what I read about you tonight will be on the website, our website in the next couple of days, as well as it'll be in next month's edition of the Norwood Star newspaper. So I'd like to start out with, our Norwood High School Rising Star Students for the month of March are Abigail Mastin, Grayson Craig, and Elijah Harris. Abigail Mastin is an amazing student. She fully participates and isn't afraid to be wrong, even though that's very rare. She has a great sense of humor and brings so much to my classroom. I'm genuinely glad to see her every morning. Abigail is one of those students you wish you could clone when creating a band program. She was always on time and always possesses a great attitude when it comes to rehearsing. A large part of the band's success has been because of kids like Abigail. I look forward to helping her live up to her leadership potential in the coming years. Abigail is a student who always does her best. She is extremely intuitive and insightful on the topics and issues we discuss in American history. Abigail always completes her work with attention to detail and thoughtfulness. Abigail is also a great classmate and is willing to help others in class grasp the ideas and concepts, and makes the whole class better result. She is a wonderful student to have in class. Grayson Craig is a strong leader in his own quiet and understated way. He has great intellect, which he shares generously with his classmates without being overbearing. He's the epitome of the idea, still waters run deep. Grayson's intelligence and work ethic, combined with a tremendous sense of humor and awareness of the world around him, both significantly advanced for someone his young age, make him one of the strongest students in our school. He has excelled in English, acting class, on the academic team, as well as in numerous other areas. Elijah Harris has proven himself to be conscientious student time and time again, while taking a genuine interest in being able to understand whatever the topic is in class. He asks great questions. I can always tell he's really making an effort to be at his best, and this is what makes him so successful in class. Whether in the classroom or on the field, you can expect a positive example from Elijah. He is a leader who leads through his actions. Next is Norwood Middle School Rising Star Students for the month of March are Caroline Kelly, Kimberly Firth, and David Valerio-Guian. Norwood Middle School is proud to announce Caroline Kelly is the Rising Star Student for the month of March. Caroline is the epitome of a great student, and she is an example for the rest of the seventh grade. She's well-rounded, driven, and kind. Moreover, she tries to do her best in school, study for tests and quizzes, and always surrounds herself with positive influences. Caroline's good-natured personality has made quite the impression on our teachers, who unanimously nominated her for this honor. Along with making academics a priority, Caroline also participates in a variety of after-school clubs. She's a member of sewing club, art academy, and chess club, and she plays the flute in the band class. In her spare time, Caroline enjoys reading and creating new artistic expressions. In the short term, she would like to get straight A's all throughout her middle school career. Long term, Caroline wants to graduate high school, get accepted to college, and major in marine biology or art. Norwood Middle School is expecting amazing things from Caroline in the future. Kimberly Firth is the female eighth-grade Rising Star Student of the Month. She's always smiling and happy. In class, she is a diligent worker and takes pride in her schoolwork. She is organized and extremely detail-oriented. She's, she has great peer relationships in and outside of school. She is very helpful and supportive of her friends. Teachers have never heard Kimberly say an unkind word about anyone. She is actively involved in community organizations within the city of Norwood. Kimberly has many goals and aspirations that she wants to achieve in the future. Kimberly is such a delightful student at the middle school. She is a wonderful role model to her peers and is a great person to be around. Students like Kimberly Firth are what make Norwood Middle School great. David Valerio-Guian is the male eighth-grade Rising Star Student this month. David moved to the United States a year and a half ago from Venezuela and has made a smooth transition. He is very well-spoken and presents himself in an extremely mature manner. He gravitates with both teachers and students and is extremely inquisitive. David is also a very active person. He's jumped right into school activities of soccer, wrestling, track, and after-school clubs. He is very driven and motivated to do well in school. David admits that he freaks out if he has a C in any classes. David, you wanna move into my house with me? Getting good grades is a priority of his. In the classroom, he does what's expected of him and doesn't mess around. This summer, David plans on going to Kings Island, hanging around on UC's campus, playing soccer and playing video games. In the future, David would like to attend University of Cincinnati to become a computer engineer. David Valero is a sunshine, is a ray of sunshine at Norwood Middle School. He is an all-around excellent student. He makes Norwood Middle School a better place. Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary School's Rising Star Students for the month of March are Avery Greer, Casey Hendrickson, and Starla Kane. Sharpsburg Elementary, fourth grade, would like to honor Avery Greer as a Rising Star Student for the month of March. Avery is such an asset to the classroom. He follows the rules, is prepared for class, and does wonderful work each day. Avery's work is always thorough and neat. During tests, Avery is one of the last students finished, not because he doesn't know the answers, but because he checks over his work before turning it in. Avery is always polite and respectful and is a great role model to his peers. Not only is Avery a fantastic student, he is also extremely generous. In Sharpsburg was collecting cans for cancer research, Avery brought in baggies filled with coins to donate. During the Jump Road for Heart campaign, Avery was a top fundraiser for the elementary building and collecting over a hundred dollars. Avery would like to be a Norwood police officer someday. It is very important to Avery that citizens of Norwood are safe. He enjoys math as his favorite subject in school. He loves the challenges his math teacher always has for him on a daily basis. Avery attributes his character to his parents. They love him but expect him to be the best he can be. Avery's teachers find it a pleasure to have him as a student. We're thrilled that Avery is receiving the Rising Star Award this month. Congratulations, Avery. Sharpsburg kindergarten team would like to recognize Casey Hendrickson for Rising Star. Casey comes to school each day prepared and ready to learn. She sets a good example for others by displaying champ behavior every day. Casey is kind and compassionate to her classmates. Casey is a very hard worker in her wonderful participant class. She's always given one hundred percent. Casey is reading far above her grade level. Her teachers are proud of her and all of her accomplishments in kindergarten. Casey is a wonderful Sharpsburg Bulldog. Way to go, Casey. Starla Kane came to Sharpsburg this year in mid-year. She was an immediate hit with all the kids. Starla greets everyone she meets with a smile on her face. She has proven to be a friend to others, even when being a friend wasn't the easiest choice to make. She sure isn't a fair-weather friend. Starla genuinely cares about her friends and their feelings. If she sees someone else is having a bad day, she is the first to check on them, listen to their frustrations, and she isn't afraid to stand up for someone when the need should arise. Starla's reputation for being trustworthy and dependable has been noticed by the students and staff alike. When teachers occasionally need to help her in the room, Starla is an easy choice. She is the first to volunteer, and we can always count on her to see the job through to fruition. She is diligent in her studies and takes her academic achievements seriously. Congratulations, well-to-go Starla. Next is Norwood View Elementary School's Rising Star Students for the month of March are Aleah Cup, Mackenzie Gardner, and Kimberly Araceli-Pena. Even when our students don't show, because many of them are practicing baseball, softball, and soccer tonight, we still make sure that we honor them. Aleah Cup is a Rising Star in Mrs. Douglas's second grade at Norwood View. She is always a willing worker and works hard in all academic areas. She is an enthusiastic learner and participates well in class. She pays close attention to what Mrs. Douglas is teaching. When students are absent, the work they've missed is left on their desk. When Aleah returns to school, she gets right to work on her makeup work without being asked to do it. She also doesn't have to be prompted to begin her daily assignments, and she can be counted on to complete every assignment. Not only is she strong in all subjects, but she works well with her friends when she does partner work. She is friendly and helpful to her friends and respectful to adults. She has even asked Mrs. Douglas if she can be moved when the person next to her is a bit too social. She does not wanna get too involved in any misbehavior. She is a model student in Mrs. Douglas's classroom. Way to go. Congratulations, Aleah. Congratulations to Mackenzie Gardner on a well-deserved Rising Star Award. Mackenzie is enthusiastic and loves being at school and learning with her peers. Mac is always willing to learn and always willing to help others. She is caring, considerate, and works cooperatively, and is a true definition of a social butterfly. Mackenzie's been working very hard on her individual learning goals and consistently has been making progress. In particular, she's made beautiful strides in reading and continues to impress us daily. Keep up the great work, Mac, we're all proud of you. This month, the fifth grade teachers would like to honor Kimberly Araceli-Pena as our star student. Kimberly's a very quiet student in everything that she does. In the classroom, Kimberly works independently and diligently. One of her greatest assets is in her ability to listen. When given an instruction or assignment, she listens intently. Therefore, she never needs reminders, prompts, or unnecessary attention drawn to her. She quietly goes about her tasks and gives one hundred percent of her effort to do her work. Her homework is always complete, and she knows exactly what to do when her assignments are completed. She is able to move independently within the room with maturity and purpose. Kimberly is a true peace builder. She knows how to avoid conflicts and drama with her peers and how to treat others with kindness and respect. She is always ready to lend a hand to someone who needs help and is honest and trustworthy. Kimberly's future is extremely bright. She is a pleasure to teach and a pleasure to know. It is with great sincerity that we honor Kimberly for her outstanding character and academic diligence. We look forward to seeing her continued excellence. Williams Avenue Elementary School Rising Star Students for the month of March are Madeline Turner, Emily Pilker ton, and Landon Bryce. The kindergarten team is nominating Madeline Turner for kindergarten, Rising Student of the Month for March. Madeline is a kindergartner in Mr. Wild's class at Williams Avenue Elementary. Madeline is a friend to all and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Madeline takes great pride in her work and always follows directions. Madeline has showed much growth by already surpassing her reading goals for the year. There's another student, Williams, or in the district for that matter, that shows more school spirit than Madeline. Spirit, we get a chance for her to go all out with her wardrobe, but she dresses to impress. Thank you, Madeline, for being an awesome kid and being another reason why Williams Avenue Elementary is a special place. Mr. McLean nominates Emily Pilker ton as a Rising Star Student for the month of March because Emily has done a wonderful job of coming to school, ready to be attentive, active in learning, and accountable for her results. Emily has made great strides in Mrs. Schaefer's math class, as well as tremendous improvements in English Language Arts with Mrs. Dykes. Since school returned back in session from winter break, Emily surely has made it obvious that she will take each day in stride as she makes improvements for herself and her family by making them proud of her. Emily exhibits all of the qualities we look for in a Rising Star Student, displaying champs and peace builder qualities each day at school. Emily is surely what we look for in students of her age, or surely finds success that she rightfully deserves. Mr. Dahl, Mr. Wackett, the P.E. and music teachers at Williams, are proud to recognize Landon Bryce as our Williams Avenue Rising Star for March. Landon has been a great member of our Williams community for seven years now. Landon is always one of the first in class to try a new challenge, always works hard on whatever the activity is. Everyone knows Landon for his good, his good attitude, great smile, and tremendous cooperation. Congratulations, Landon Bryce.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Now I'm gonna do one more again. One, two, three.
At this point, we take a couple-minute break. We would ask- We would ask all the families of Rising Star students and Rising Star students to follow our executive assistant outside for more pictures. We'll take a couple-minute break here.
All right, we'll go ahead and proceed with our meeting. Item 6 on the agenda is Education Committee. In Ms. Jurecy's absence, we're gonna ask Ms. Horstley if she will take care of that.
Absolutely. So after review, I would like to ask the board's permission to approve Item 6A, Student Trips, which is Nordview Elementary's trip to Newport Aquarium in Newport, Kentucky. It's the 1st grade class and teachers as the date listed. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this trip.
We have a motion. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Horstley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes. Moving on to Item 7, Personnel.
Mr. Modi. Mr. President, members of the board have several items this evening under Personnel. Begin with Letter A, Employment. Number 1, Teacher Contract 2016-2017 School Year. One individual to recommend. Number 2, Classified Subs 2015-16 School Year. One individual to recommend. Number 3, Resolution to Hire Non-Certified Coaches/Advisors for the 2015-16 School Year. Number 4, Supplemental Contracts 2015-16 School Year. Have 3 individuals to recommend. And that concludes my recommendations for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Modi. Can we get a motion for approval of Items 7, 1 through 4?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Horstley. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Horstley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes. Moving on to Item 8, Policy. We have no policies, so we'll move on down to Item 9, Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Bryant.
Yes, Mr. President. With the board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for Item A, 1 through 5. 1 being Avenue for Success, 2 being the Norwood Hometown Fireworks, 3 being Norwood Promise, 4 being BSC Stingrays, and 5 is the Norwood Wrestling Team. All dates are listed and timed.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bryant.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Horstley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes. Moving on to Item 10, Finance. Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. President. By recommendation of committee, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Item 10A, Approval of Financial Reports February 2016, and Item 10B, Approval of Resolution Requesting Fiscal Officer to Certified Maximum Maturity of Bonds. Pardon me, Resolution Requesting Fiscal Officer to Certified Maximum Maturity of Bonds. I'm just gonna hit the...
There's also Item C.
Got a vote box after the first one on page 8.
We have a motion for A and B on... Is it Section 10?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr... Was that Mr. Bryant?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horstley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the Item C, Approval of Resolution Declaring the Necessity of Issuing Bonds, Submitting the Question to the Electors of the School District, and Directing the Fiscal Officer to Apply For Authority to Exceed the 4% and 9% Debt Limitations.
We have a motion for Item 10C. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horstley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, Item 10D, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Resolution Declaring the Necessity of Loving the Tax for the General Permanent Improvements in Excess of the 10 mil Limitation, and Requesting the County Auditor to Certified Matters in Connection therewith.
We have a recommendation for Item 10D. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horstley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
No, that's it, I think. You're all right.
You're good.
All right, move on to Item 11, Hearing of the Public. We have no requests. Item 12, Board Announcements. Any announcements? I'd just like to say that as the weather turns warmer, we're gonna start seeing kids go outside for recess, so make sure you dress the kids appropriately and send them to school. I know they're gonna be excited about being out there. And also, that leads us into spring break next week, so, you know, be prepared for spring break, and I think it's the end of the day next week is when it starts, so still got one more week to go. And, you know, we recognized our winter sports already, but spring sports are up and running, so, you know, get out to the ballgames and watch the kids. Any other announcements? Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to... Great congratulations again to Mr. Mallon. I mean, you talk about a wonderful journey of life, yet he still had one focus, and that focus still lay back here at Norwood High School, actually right next door at the time. And to be able to not only have him back, but his whole family, to show no matter what you accomplish, there's still an importance to a high school diploma, is just tremendous. And then what Casey and Travon accomplished, you know, if you break it down, there's three weight classes in wrestling, so that has about 370 wrestlers per weight class in Division 2. And Casey and Travon were 1 of 16 out of that 370 to be able to go up to Columbus and then represent Norwood High School, and it's the second time Casey's done it, and just a sophomore. Travon showed great perseverance and dedication this year. And then, I don't know, JD, when was the last time we had a three-year consecutive league championship in any athletics? Can you remember?
The '80s with volleyball.
So, and now we have the academic team. So that shows the importance and how difficult being a champion in anything is difficult, but doing it three years in a row is amazing. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Moving on to Item 14, Grade Oaks Reporting.
Yes, I was not able to attend the meeting last week due to illness. So we'll report back next month.
While you're on the floor, do you want to hit the Avenue for Success?
Sure. So lots is going on for the Avenue for Success. We just approved the field usage for the Glow for the Cure event, which is gonna take place May 14th. It's a wonderful event where we have balloons lighting up the field, which is a unique sight anywhere, but especially for here in Norwood. Last year was a great success, and we're hoping to make it even better this year, so please come out and support us, but we're working hard to make sure everything's in place and ready for that big day on May 14th.
Thank you, Ms. Horstley. Item 16, Legislative Report. Mr. Miracle.
I don't have anything to share this evening. Mr. President.
Thank you. Item 17, we're gonna move right on to the meeting notification. All meetings will be held here at Court of Education Office at 2132 Williams Avenue, unless otherwise noted. We have the committee meeting on Tuesday, April the 12th, at 5:30, and the regular board meeting, which will be here in the high school mini auditorium on Thursday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM. Can I get a motion to accept these?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Horstley. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Horstley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
And moving to the next item on the agenda, Executive Session. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or an investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. Can I get a motion to go into Executive Sessions? Motion by Ms. Miracle. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Miracle.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Horstley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes, we are in Executive Session at 7:02 PM.